... For microphones on. Don Watson.
What?
Yeah. I think what will help is...
The board meeting login isn't being used for the Google Meet, so we can't let people in.
Okay, so we need to log out on that and then log into the...
Board meeting one.
Yeah.
It's Brent.
When you do that...
Sound check. We may have to log out the people in here.
You just turn off your mic. And she left, she'll come back.
Sound check Heather.
Yeah, you sound good, as long as you all keep your mics muted and your volume down on your computers in the room, it's fine.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for all attending the meeting, I'm calling it to order now. Just reminder, if you can't hear or having some technical difficulties, please raise your hand in the Google Meet or chat in the chat box and Tiffany and Thomas will be helping you. So first off, it is oath of office.
So we will start, why don't we start over here with Sarah Crawford, who is re-elected.
I'm standing, I'm feeling like I'm supposed to stand.
Raise your right hand Sarah Crawford and we'll go through this. I state your name.
I, Sarah Crawford.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Phoenix Town School District.
And the policies of the Phoenix Town School District.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of a school board member to the best of my ability, so help me God.
During my term, I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of a school board member to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Rebecca, you had a great exemplar.
Raise your right hand please. I state your name.
I, Rebecca Weather.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Phoenix Town School District.
And the policies of the Phoenix Town School District.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of a school board member to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of a school board member to the best of my abilities, so help me God.
Congratulations. Polly, I state your name.
I, Polly Fairmont.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Phoenix Town School District.
I didn't raise my hand.
Oh.
So can we start again?
Raise your hand.
Okay.
I state your name.
I, Polly Fairmont.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Phoenix Town School District.
And the policies of the Phoenix Town School District.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of a school board member to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of a school board member to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Michael. Raise your right hand please. I state your name.
I, Michael Campbell.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
The Constitution of the State of Oregon and the laws thereof.
And the policies of the Phoenix Town School District.
And the policies of the Phoenix Town School District.
During my term.
During my term.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of a school board member to the best of my ability, so help me God.
I will faithfully and impartially discharge the responsibilities of a school board member to the best of my ability, so help me God.
Congratulations. We will swear in Nancy, who is absent today at our next board meeting as well.
Thank you all, congratulations on the running of the election. Now it is election of the officers. Any board member can make a nomination and the nomination does not need to be seconded. The board chair now opens the floor for nominations for board chair.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a nomination, Don Watson for board chair.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I am closing the nominations and we will vote for board chair. Sarah?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
I am board chair, thank you all very much, I appreciate it. Now we have nominations for vice chair, any board member can make a nomination and the nomination does not need to be seconded, once nomination is made, I will announce the first of the names who has been nominated and we will vote. So any nominations for vice chair?
I nominate Michael Campbell for vice chair.
Any other nominations? Hearing that, Michael Campbell was nominated, we will take it to a vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
I will vote yes.
Thank you, congratulations. Moving on, accentuate the positive. Normally, we don't have very many admins on today, but if they would like to. Heather, would you like to accentuate the positive?
Yes, good evening. Good evening Madam Chair Watson and Board, Heather Low Rogers, Principal over at Talent Elementary. I'm attending because I really wanted to give you an update on summer school, which had been going for a couple of weeks at the high school level, but this week we geared up and started our elementary and middle school program, so I just wanted to update everyone on the awesome stuff that's happening. So I'll try to keep this quick, but I don't have the pressure of my colleagues around me to keep it quiet, right? So, no donkey year. So at the elementary level, we have just under 60 staff members and serving 260 kids. Middle school level, 12 staff members, 91 students. High school level, 13 staff members and 90 students. And so that totals up to about 84 people like on the ground in the schools, working, not to mention a lot of district office support. So really kudos to all of those staff members and we're serving just over 450 kiddos. Some highlights of the different programs, the elementary is where I'm spending most of my time, obviously, but we're really excited to share that, you know, of those 450 kids across the district, we're feeding them two meals a day, which is wonderful. We always think about nutrition when we talk about our kids. Elementary is also offering free childcare in the afternoon through the YMCA Boys and Girls Club, which has been wildly popular. They're doing really cool summer camp kind of stuff. Brent and I walked by the other day when they were playing slip and slide, we were like, what? We want to do that? Felt a little jealous. Some other elementary highlights, we're working on our spent inclusion, you guys know that we did a book study this last year. And so we have the majority of our site-based students included into general ed classrooms, which has been really celebratory to watch that integration happen. Also lots of hands-on learning experiences, Kendra Bullstad's on right now and she's doing a really fun food unit study with her kindergarteners, it is probably the cutest thing you'll ever see, getting those, seeing those kids like make actual meals and learn about nutrition. We have gardening through Rogue Valley Farm to School, we've got solar robots, real bugs, the bug guys with us, so that's all in addition to kind of our traditional SEL reading and math programs. At the middle school, they're doing project-based learning as well, they're doing some really cool like analysis of history through movies, language art stories and fairy tales, but then they're working with Talent Maker City in the afternoons, they're building go-karts, welding, wood turning, social media, video game design, ceramics, it's just a plethora of goodness. At the high school, there's a lot of credit retrieval, there's some orientation for freshmen coming in, and then in the afternoon, they're doing Talent Maker City camps with laser engraving, blacksmithing, mural painting and even construction. So that's not even everything, but I can tell you that wowzers, there's a reason we have so many people working, because it takes a lot of work and I just want to say thanks to all of the staff that are supporting it and the families, it's been quite a ride. So it's been so fun to see the kids back at school and they're actually having quite the blast, you wouldn't imagine that people are excited about summer school, but they are, so that's it from me.
Thank you very much. Tiffany?
Thanks. I will open the camera, even though it's a really bad angle on me, but I know someone can see that. I want to also just talk about summer school for a little bit, so of course a big thank you to Heather Low, I mean, I know she's exhausted, it's a lot of work, but it is well worth it when we see the kids. Samara Giders is our secondary admin and Maria Lee is overseeing the migrant education piece, but really kudos to our staff. But I also wanted to mention some of our community organizations that are helping out, so Ashland Community Hospital Foundation has a drive right now to help fund some of our programs, so they're actually funding our nursing services for the whole summer, which is very nice, we really rely on cheering Miss Donaldour School Nurse, but we also have another RN that's helping with some of the social emotional learning and then ongoing data stuff that might come up during summer school. They also bought all of our summer school t-shirts, which are really cool, if you haven't seen them, that was really kind of them, and they're funding two of our projects that will commemorate the resiliency of our community after the fire. With that project, a big thank you to Rogue Valley Council of Government, they're helping teach some science for some interpretive signs that we'll be making for the Greenway with Sandra Tringler's class, I got to go on a field trip this week, it was awesome, and Jackson County and Jackson County Parks, of course, for letting us put interpretive signs on the Greenway, that's really nice. And then a huge shout out to Talent Maker City, they just have so many local builders and makers and artists and scientists that are really helping us out, it's great to see our teachers work alongside our community members for just the creativity and genius that's going on, so I wanted to give an extra shout out to them.
Thank you very much Tiffany. Anybody else would like to do an accentuate the positive? Hearing that, we will move on to citizens' comments. Before I start the thing of citizens' comments, I want everyone to know that effective August 5th, the next board meeting, the public will be allowed to attend in person, which I think will be very nice. If you wish to speak during the citizens' comment, when we are live, please arrive early and sign in before the meeting begins, the sign-in sheet will be located at the entrance of the meeting room and we will be meeting at the high school. So I look forward to seeing people attending it. As I am now going to speak about tonight, as a reminder, meetings of the board and directors are meetings in the public versus public meetings. Any comments? Those joining us will be under public meeting laws, comments will only be heard during the allotted time of the agenda and must be limited to three minutes with a 15-minute total for all comments. Please do not expect the board to respond to these comments at this time. The board cannot hear public complaints directed towards an employee, those complaints should be presented to the employee's immediate supervisor or person in writing. If you are having technical difficulties, please let us know via chat or raise your hand. If you wish to provide public comments, please raise your hand or write in chat. Tiffany and Thomas will tell me and then I will call your name. Please turn on your camera and speak as slowly as possible. Remember to be respectful and we will be respectful in return. For the record, please state your name and if you are with an organization. If you had submitted written comments, please summarize instead of reading it word for word and please limit your comments to three minutes. As a reminder, you may also email your comments to the board secretary prior to the meeting by noon of the meeting day and your comment will be shared with the board. Is there anyone that is lined up? First is Lisa Jenny. Lisa Jenny, please turn on your camera as possible and unmute yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Just a sec. Okay, so I'm actually, I did, I am reading, but I wrote all of this and so it won't be three minutes, I can guarantee you that. So I'm just going to start out reading what I wanted to say. So there's a fast-growing group of parents, guardians and citizens that are very concerned about what is being taught and pushed down the throats of our young children in our schools, our local schools. Our group will be introduced to the public soon. We want to keep critical race theory out of our children's education in schools. We want facts, not myths, lies and/or theories. Teach the truth about the greatness of America. Some teachers seem to be not presenting a fact-based education so that our children can form their own opinions. Luckily, this last year of school on Google Meet was very eye-opening, very eye-opening experience for me and many other parents. Shame on me for believing schools were strictly teaching my children in education. As I have learned, I'm not the only one that felt this way and I was totally blindsided. Parents and citizens have been awakened to what is really happening and being taught to our children. We can no longer be silent and must share to others what is happening in our schools. Since the school board's special election, I have had parents, teachers and citizens reach out to me about their concerns. Teachers have told me they are afraid to say anything because they will be bullied and picked on if they voice their counter-opinion. Really? I mean adults bullying other teachers, don't we supposedly teach against this type of behavior? Or is it that one group can do this and the other group is just censored and threatened to not speak up? I have been made aware of a couple current teachers that are throwing out BLM and critical race theory curriculum in the classroom. Their theories, not fact-based education. Teachers, parents and students have come to me complaining about the one-sided politics, that they are trying to pollute our children's minds within our district. I was told by one parent, this teacher said, "All conservatives are terrorists." Are we really going to allow this? And I don't care what side of the aisle you're on, this can't be tolerated. You are elected on the board to listen to us, the parents and the citizens of the district and to implement instruction and education, we approve of. Our children are not to be negotiated by teachers' unions, teachers, you or any other government body, they are our children and they are worth fighting for. I noticed on the district website yesterday, the Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Resource Guide among other disturbing pictures on the site, especially a photo showing a baby and then every year up to six plus. Age one quotes, "Children use race to reason about people's behaviors." Really? At age one? Age two, it says, "Most children use race to choose playmates." That's at age two. What a complete lie and pollution being fed to our children. That is the last thing they look at is color. Age three, "Expression of racial prejudice often peaks at age four and five." And to top it off, at age five, "Black and Latinx children in research settings show no preference towards their own groups compared to whites." White children at this age remain strongly biased in favor of whiteness. Parents need to be aware of what's happening and what our tax dollars are being used for. So my question, and you guys, I would like a written response from the board. My one first question is, how will parents be easily informed and updated on the current curriculum, especially regarding critical race theory and the division that is coming into the district schools and classrooms? Number two, how will you commit to keeping personal politics out of the classroom? And number three, have you made a decision on the masks for this upcoming year? And that's...
Thank you for your comments, I appreciate them. Zach Moody, you are next, please. Three minutes, when you can, I'll give you a twenty second warning, I'll tell you three minutes and then I'll give you a twenty second warning if you can wrap it up, please. Your three minutes are over, so thank you Zach.
Perfect, thank you. Good evening Madam Chair and board members, my name is Zach Moody, 4620 Fern Valley Road in Medford. I'd like to take a few minutes to discuss a few questions and concerns that we as parents have and ask for your help in understanding the district's position on equity. What does equity look like and how is it going to benefit the kids and not divide them further? We believe it's important for people to know the difference between equity and equality. Quality is what allows people to rise up from oppression and achieve a goal. Equity is the opposite of that and can be defined by proportional fairness. Equity is different from equality in that equity, everyone has the same amount of something, food, medicine, opportunity, despite their existing needs, their asset or how hard they work to achieve their goal. In other words, whether you're two feet tall or six feet tall, being equitable means that everyone would be given a five-foot ladder to reach a 10-foot platform. Put another way, developing policies that promote equity actually suppress the opportunities of those attempting to go above and beyond to achieve a specific goal by intentionally leveling the playing field. Equity emphasizes fairness in process and result, pointing out differences and accommodating them to prevent the continuation of the inequitable status quo. And while all of us can agree that there should be fairness in process, results are driven by an individual's desire to succeed and will not always produce the same outcome for everybody. This is where we as parents struggle and we as parents and community members struggle. Why is the public school system trying to hold our kids back from succeeding based on race, demographic, background or even their upbringing? It's, in a perfect world where politics are not in the classroom and teachers' biases are set aside, equity and equality can go hand in hand. Equity can be understood as the means and equality as the end. Equity can lead to, equity can lead to equality if bias in politics are removed, but unfortunately in today's heightened political polarization, we've witnessed individuals using equity as a tool to encourage further division among students and we're seeing that in our school districts and in our curriculum. As parents, we are deeply concerned at anything that encourages division. It's important to have an open, honest talk and to encourage dialogue so that our children can make, form, form mature and sound opinions, but it's not the teacher's job to force their personal opinions and biases on our program. We want to finish by saying that the school board's first priority is the students, it's not the teachers and it's not the teachers' unions, it is our students. Making sure all students get a safe and non-politically derived education. We hope that as we move forward and more voices are heard, that the board understands that we will continue to push the school board to fight for our children's rights and for the board to stick to traditional educational values rather than promoting more division and catering to the political positions of our teachers' unions and political action groups. We'd also like to just ask, as Lisa said, that we want this to be brought up on this next agenda item as a discussion item for you as the board to discuss in open forum, followed by the potential of a public hearing for us to engage with the school board to have this conversation that will be beneficial for all of us to find a resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Who is next? Chris, you are next.
Can you hear me?
This is Chris, can I speak now?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you very much. Well, welcome to the National League of School Board members, Rebecca and Polly, and congratulations to the re-elected members, Michael, Sarah and Tiffany. And thank you to all you for still being on the board, you have a lot of work to do and I appreciate your volunteer effort, you've got a full agenda. I had two housekeeping issues, the first was to go back to in-person meetings that's already taken care of for your next meeting, that's great news. Second, just like other government bodies in Oregon, like the Metta Ward Commission, the Jackson County Board of Commissioners, the Phoenix and Talent City Councils, the Phoenix Town School Board must make available to the public all board meeting information that's emailed to the board, not just the agenda. I understand that Board Chair Watson is working with Ms. Skinner to make this happen on the district website and hopefully it'll be available for the next meeting. At the very least, all the meeting information should be emailed to all residents that request the meeting information. So what I'm asking for is that Board Chair Watson give Ms. Skinner the authority to email public meeting information to the interest of residents. So the same email that goes out to the board should be able to be emailed to me or to any other resident within the district. And that's it, I appreciate your volunteerism, thanks guys.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Craig Pruitt, you are up next.
Hi, thank you once again, I apologize because my Apple system is fighting with Google Meet. I'd like to say congratulations to all the recently elected board members, it is an awesome district and you have accepted an awesome job. I am pleased with your commitment, glad that you are willing to work for our community. I have read the guiding principles many times of the Phoenix Town District and wonder if it makes sense to have a guiding principle on the following subject. So will Phoenix Town School District policies and curriculum be reflective of local community values? That's kind of a big question, but I hope you will consider it at your next meeting, whenever you have a chance to review the guiding principles that drive you and that drive all decisions. Now I know that all citizens' comments are not intended or designed to be interactive, but I hope to receive a written answer from either a board representative or the superintendent's office. Again, I'd like to say thank you for your work, thank you for your volunteer spirit and your commitment to serving the community in Phoenix Town Schools. Thanks so much.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Moving on to the superintendent report. Moving on to the superintendent report.
Thank you, Madam Chair Watson. I first want to start off by welcoming our new Assistant Superintendent of HR, Jessica Hamlin, is on her fourth day as Assistant Superintendent of HR. So, really excited at Jessica Hamlin on board. And she really shined through the interview process. And when we did a site visit to her former employer, it was... We had to run out of there because they knew we were going to steal her, and they weren't very happy. So, thank you, Jessica. Next thing I want to share, you heard so many things about... ...in things that have been going on. Our staff here, HR Tiffany, and the people hiring are... ...working all the supplies that happened out of this office, and was a huge undertaking. So I want to say thank you to everybody in this district office who helped prepare for summer school. Denise had to work with Foss and Keith, probably does not ever want to see another key checkout form again, but thank you so much for taking the time to do that. This board expressed the desire to have a board retreat, with the board to really establish some, you know, goals and work on some systems with the board. Technically, a date that may work is August 3rd, and Denise will be reaching out to you on that. If that date does not work, we will find another date. In addition, we will need to find some time with the OSBA rep to come and meet with our board and help us. As you know, we had that on the schedule, and it didn't work out this time. But to find some time during the year for the OSBA rep to come down and have a few hours with us. So, that's also going to be scheduled. I will share with you, as you know, there's a resiliency framework that got released from the state, ODE, and the state last week on June 25th. And today, we had a team of ten people that represented licensed, classified staff, admin staff, board members, parents. And we have a plan to get feedback from our community on how their hopes and dreams about how we open up in the fall. And we also made some decisions because we have summer school happening right now. So, we shared with our staff, and we will share with our families tomorrow in an announcement, that if you're in grade six through twelve, you're in summer school right now, masks are optional for all students and staff. That will be starting Monday in summer school moving forward. We aren't quite ready to make that decision at the elementary level. So if you are a staff member that has been vaccinated, you will not have to wear your mask at summer school at the elementary. Students and unvaccinated staff, for the time being, will need to continue to wear masks. So that will start Monday, and we'll continue to meet with that group and gather feedback from our community, our students and staff and families, to see how we want to proceed for the fall. We will make a recommendation and send that information to the board at our next board meeting on the fifth, I believe, of August. We'll talk about it a little bit more, but I do want to just mention that House Bill 2630, the ADM security, in fury of the end of the session, which I can't imagine how frantic that is. The House bill that we've been watching and have been really assured of it passing and going through, did not make it on the docket. So, since then, actually that very same...
You all right?
Yeah, I'm fine. I'm good. Don't sit on the end of these chairs. Well, I almost fell out of my chair when I heard that that bill didn't pass. I will tell you. It was... It made me very nervous about moving forward. But we're assured from our representatives here, Pam Marsh being one who's on it, who's a sponsor of the bill, the Speaker Koteck, and Cole Gill from ODE, that this will be something that is addressed in the short session immediately in February. And we have letters stating that, and I think I shared some of that with the board. And we can talk more about that at the legislative discussion. So, that's all I have.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Brett?
I... So about that bill, it was... The fact that it didn't make it on the docket made me fall out of my chair. We have some conditions in our negotiated contracts. So how do we move forward with those from, you know, in this upcoming fiscal year without the assurance of that? I think you have an update when we get to that. Just like, all right, that's good. Okay, great, thank you.
Sorry, I should have said except for that issue.
Okay.
Okay.
I'll be on the edge of my seat.
Please do not order. So now, the consent agenda, since it's so long, we have to read every item, and we will vote on it as well. So, the consent agenda will be approve the agenda. Approve the agenda minutes of six, seventeen, twenty-one. Designate Brent Barry as Chief Administrator Officer of School District Clerk. Designate Jessica Hamlin as Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources. Deputy clerk as Tiffany Lambert as Assistant Superintendent of Academics and Student Programs Deputy clerk. Designate Brent Barry, Tiffany Lambert, and Jessica Hamlin as Custodians of Funds. Designate Brent Barry as Budget Officer. Designate the Mail Tribune and the Daily Titan as official newspapers. Authorization of purchase of $100,000 fidelity bond for Brent Barry, Tiffany Lambert, and Jessica Hamlin of $50,000 fidelity bonds for all the other employees. Designate A... A Kasam?
Kazmakha.
Kazmakha, thank you. Donley and Fields as company district auditors. Designate depositors for school funds. See the attached list. I don't have the attached list, but you can get it online, I believe. I do have it? Okay, I'm gonna have to read over everything, thank you. Sorry about that. Design for investments, also with attached list. Authorize Brent Barry, Tiffany Lambert, and Jessica Hamlin as check signers. Designate chairman and/or vice-chair. And Brent Barry has authorized signatures for rants. Approve the use of fax machines for Brent Barry, Tiffany Lambert, and Jessica Hamlin. Designate that Palk of PGP Law, PC, and Attorney and Records. Designate Ball Janic LLP as Corporate Activity Tax Specialist Council. Designate Hungerford Law Firm as School Law Specialist Council. Designate borrowing limit of $500,000 for custodian funds. Designate John McHale for AHERA, which is Asbestos Hazard Emergency Respond Act Compliance Officer, and the Personnel Report. Do I have a motion for that?
Yes.
Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Rick moves. Sarah, second, we'll take it to a vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes, the consent agenda passes. We are moving on to action item, which is Resolution 21-5, the Superintendent Signing Authority.
I move that the board approve Resolution 21-5, granting Superintendent Barry the signing authority for executing change orders related to outstanding construction projects as presented.
Thank you, Michael. Do I have a second?
I second it.
Thank you, Michael, thank you, Polly. We'll take it. Any discussions? Hearing none. We'll take it to a vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
Resolution passes. Next resolution, 21-6, designation of LCRV for 2021-2022.
I move that the board approve Resolution 21-6, authorizing the board of directors to act in the capacity of its own local contract review board for the Phoenix Talent School District as presented.
Thank you, Polly. Do I have a second?
I second.
Thank you, Rebecca. Any discussions? Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
I vote yes, action passes. On to action item number three, Resolution 21-7, for reduced lunch.
I move that the board approve Resolution 21-7, clearing that the use of disclosure of free and reduced lunch information is confidential according to the National School Lunch Act of Child Nutrition Act as presented.
Thank you, Rick. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Polly will second. Any discussions? And we'll take it to a vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
I vote yes, and we are moving on. For the audience, this is stuff we do every year, so it's something we've seen before. Next would be Resolution 21-8, real property purchases and capital expenditures.
Oh, is it my turn? I move that...
If you want it to be.
I move that the board approve Resolution 21-8, approving the purchase of real property and/or capital expenditures, and authorizes the officers of the district to execute the purchase and finance agreements that may be necessary to carry out the transaction as presented.
Thank you, Sarah. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Michael, for the second. Any further discussions? We'll take it to a vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes, resolution passes. Next is administrative confidential directors and superintendent contracts.
I move that the board approve administrative confidential directors and superintendents contracts as presented.
Second.
Thank you, Michael, thank you, Rick. Any discussions? Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes, administrative contractors approved. Transportation contracts. This is with First Student.
Yeah, I just, I really appreciate that pal for spending a lot of time on this with First Student. We feel like we're, you know, a district that we can work with, and we had to go a lot of back and forth. I think First Student had a lot of contracts at the same time, so their attorneys were delaying a bit on sending the information back. And then it wouldn't be necessarily what was in the RFP. And that pal really takes care of us on what's in the RFP and the contract language. And he's just really good at it, so I just want to acknowledge him.
I have a question, it's not necessarily with the contract, but it's maybe transportation-related. And that is, the 12 and 15 passenger vans are they property of the district and included as part of the contract? Or could you...
It could be either way.
Okay.
It could be property of First Student, or if we buy that in contract with their employee to drive that. Or we could actually, there's sometimes where we could get licensed to have our employee drive that as well. So it could be either way.
Okay.
I move that the board approve the transportation contract for First Student as presented. Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Polly, thank you, Rebecca. Any further discussions?
I did have some discussion. I had emailed some questions. And I just want to make sure that some of these things got addressed. And I wanted to take the opportunity to share with everyone the questions that I had emailed when we got the first draft of the contract.
Can I ask who you emailed?
I emailed Brent and Javier. This was when we got the first draft, and then we had to take it off the table. I just want to make sure these items were addressed. So, the first question was regarding the term of the contract. So, can you speak to that? So it's a five-year term, and then we have an option to renew? Yeah, and an option to renew for another five years. And that will, I think, part of the question to us, who makes that decision? Right. And so I think that would be, obviously, a joint decision between the superintendent and staff and the board to say, you know, we really need to consider going out for an RFP, or sit there meeting the needs of our students and families, and we would recommend that we continue that. So... Yeah, I think, you know, I think it had been some, it had been a number of years before we had an RFP, maybe two decades. I think it behooves the board and the community to be reexamining contracts in shorter intervals than that, so, in the future. And some positive things can come out of that process for both sides, so that's great. And then, page six, section 5.6, problems develop with load, bus times, or other problems that might be corrected by route alterations. Contractor will develop such solutions and present them to the district for consideration. And my question was, by when will they deliver such solutions to the district? And I apologize, we got the latest draft late. Do you know if we addressed that? Did we put a timeframe? This is the current draft, right? What you just read is in the current drafts. So, there isn't a timeframe. And I know with our situation, and it was very apparent on the challenges of doing that. There is, in the work to use technology more, to do bus routing, which has happened for years. And we will begin implementing that. And we did that with summer school, actually. And it seemed to work a little bit better. Now, that's 450 students, not 2,500 students. Right. But, okay. Yeah, just something maybe to revisit if necessary. If we don't feel like they're addressing concerns on a reasonable timeframe, it might be something to do an MOU on or something if necessary. And then, you know, the last one was just, it's my understanding that if you submit an RFP, you say you're going to do things in that RFP, you're held to that proposal. Because there were some things proposed. I think the use of technology is the biggest, that weren't necessarily current practice. And I think it's important that those are carried out and that we hold them to those. So, I'm looking forward to seeing the relationship continue. And those things, new things that they propose that will be better for our students and better for our district come fruition. So, that's it. I just wanted to make you all aware of what I think that jumped out to me about the contract. So, but I am excited, and I'm supportive of approving this. And I was on the team to review the RFPs, and it was a very detailed, involved process, and very thorough, and very positive. So, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussions? Hearing none, we will take it to a vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Polly?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
And I vote yes. Next is the classified contracts.
We, they didn't have enough members able to vote on the contract prior to last time, so we decided to push this to this meeting. The 100% unanimously approved, they're very appreciative. And thank you to the, you know, people involved in that. I know, Michael, you said it on that one. And they were very appreciative. And now they have the documentation to be able to ratify that. So that's for your approval. I move that the board approve the classified contract changes as presented for the remainder of the 2019-2023 contract.
I second. Thank you, Michael, thank you, Rebecca. Any further discussions? Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. Hearing none, we'll take it to a vote. Sarah?
Yes.
Rebecca?
Yes.
Paulie? Uh, Rick?
Yes.
Michael?
Yes.
I vote yes. Contract approved. It is now scheduled recess. Do you want to take one or forge on?
Um, or John?
Or John.
Okay, or John. Okay, perfect. So we are now on information discussion, which is facilities and bond update. I don't know if John's on.
I don't think he is on. Um, but we, uh, we're doing summer projects. We have construction excise tax projects that were, um, that are happening, and that's, that's mainly, uh, the, uh, non-bond related, uh, the cosmetic, that it's a lot of paint, it's a lot of carpet, uh, but we also have a bond-related project at Phoenix Elementary that has started, um, and they, they are, they're doing a great job, and they, we have summer school there as well, our biggest summer school, I think, um, there, and they have been very accommodated, and it's been, uh, creating a safe environment, so, um, that's what kind of going on. He will have a, uh, facilities report, um, by next meeting.
He deserves a night off, so, thank you. Uh, financial update. I don't know if we have a financial update. No. Okay, moving on to, um, as you noticed, I had them divided, used to be financial, um, legislative, and we kind of did a little tweak, worked financial separately, and now legislative, OSBA, because we don't have legislation stuff, but we have OSBA stuff, and so I thought it would be appropriate to do that, so, um, let's start with legislation. Um, do you want, can you talk me about how still twenty-six...
Yeah, so, um, there are, um, yeah, and you want to share your question again? So, yeah, so the question was, um, and I, you guys have been, you have been following, I need to not use that term as much, um, you have been following the board meetings, so thank you. Um, there is a bill that has been sitting in the state legislature that would grant us and other districts, I think there's two other districts that are, um, fire impacted, um, ADM security, in other words, hold us harmless for any enrollment drops that result from, uh, students not being able to live here, um, to stabilize our funding. And it was initially five years, and then somebody wanted to make, make it four years, and I'd like to talk to that guy anyway.
I'll explain that.
Okay, um, so, but they never, they couldn't get it out of committee to get it passed at time, as Brett said, so we negotiated contracts with our, um, licensed and classified staff that made some assumptions based on that, um, bill passing. So, I'm just wondering, what, it, I, I'm, I'm confident it's going to pass, like I think many are in February, but nothing in life is guaranteed, so my question is, what do we do with the salaries that we've put into place, assuming that would pass, for this fiscal year? So, so we have some options. I, we've been, um, recommended to not do anything different than we planned. Um, there's been direction for ODE to cover the ADM loss, uh, until they can fix that in February. Okay. And, um, and as you know, we do have a, a solid carryover to be able to cover us for this year, uh, but in speaking to both of our association, uh, leadership teams, um, with the, with the guidance and the support and the confidence I have, like you say, that it'll get done in February, um, they said, do not make any changes to your budget you just adopted, and, um, you know, the agreements you have, so. Okay. Um, placing some trust in them, but we, again, we don't have, uh, any reason why, any reason to believe that that will happen. The, the only hesitancy is it's six months down the road, right? In COVID time, that, yeah.
It's a very long time.
Yeah. Yeah. Who's that? Who does that, who's that guy? Is that coming from Cold Gill? Or... This is the Speaker of the, um, House. Okay. Tina Kotev. And she, she directed ODE, because that's the only, that's, that's the only person that can really direct, uh, ODE to do that. Okay. And we're the largest district, so we have the biggest impact. Sure. Out of the three. Right. Uh, but I'm, I'm confident we can cover in other ways. And actually, the morning that I heard the news just happened to be, uh, at a COSA conference, Cold Gill was there, uh, Morgan Allen from COSA was there, and we met in the lobby there and said, um, what's going to do? Yeah. And then it, there was a lot of, uh, conversations after that, so. Okay. I didn't mean to scare you all. Yeah. It just came out, but, um, I feel a lot better today than I did on, um, June twenty-fourth or whatever that day was. Okay.
I do, too.
Thank you.
Can I answer your other questions?
Yeah.
So, that was a concern of mine, and I wrote, wrote Richard Donovan, um, and I, I've been telling you guys, I've been talking with him, and so he, when he, on the LVC day, he's like, and this didn't pass? I'm like, I told you, I was worried for a reason! Um, but anyway, I emailed him beforehand, and he said about the, the four year, and basically, he said, um, the amendment to the change is clearing effect for four years, however, that, the intent has always been include the current year, so that's one year, and then the next four years.
Okay.
So that's, they just changed the language.
Got it.
Um, and it was still...
Because of the time frame.
Yeah.
Got it.
Yes. Um, and so that is there, and I think there's so many lobbyists, OSBA, COSA, some of the union reps, um, there's so many people, like, whoops, this happened, um, Pam Marsh, um, that they, I have confidence, but I still am nervous about it. And trust me, I will be, uh, on the day it's ready, we will, I'm sure all of us will be, please, Brett, calling on whatever, it's eight o'clock, so.
I'll drive up there if I need to.
Yeah. I will go with you, I'll drive you. Um, so, any other questions on that? There was, um, they will be sending us a breakdown, so what happens now, in case you don't know, is that, um, all the bills have to be signed by the governor, they, there's, she does have the power to veto, that doesn't happen very often, they should all go through. So, the policy committee is writing up, um, a tidbit about all the bills that, um, pass that affect schools or, or relevant to schools, and then, but they kind of wait to send that out until they've all been signed by the governor in case something happens or something changes, and it's been a weird year. So in August, we'll all get a breakout session for that. I left my notes at home, but they are, this year, for regional, um, the regional meetings, we used to do in person, they're not going to be in person, they're going to have two different, um, times to do via the internet, and then they will be recorded. If you, um, just watch your email, and I'll write them down, they're in September, and I can't remember when in September, but I will let you know. And then, um, the summer board conference is starting tomorrow, so I don't know who signs up for that, and then it's Friday and Saturday, and then they'll have it again the next Friday and Saturday, and unfortunately, I will not be able to go to the first group, hopefully the second, um, I will be able to go to. I'm sure it's great information, I can't wait for them to do in person again, and, um, well, this fall will be in person in Salem, right? The, yeah, in November.
Yes.
Yeah. Yeah. It will be. And as soon as that opens, you can pre-tell the, I think some of the authorities pre-told me somebody wanted to go, but the sooner the better, um, on that. And I think that's all for legislation and OSBA, unless you have any questions. Okay. Um, I'll meet a fire update.
I, I don't have much, but if, uh, if you've driven around or, uh, seen, uh, you know, Totem Pole over there at FEMA, there, when they moved in twenty-five, uh, families, um, I believe, um, Rogue Valley Mobile, uh, will be very soon, mid-July, I think they were going to start moving people in, and then, uh, first part of August, Coleman Creek, which has the, which has the largest number of FEMA trail, trailers, uh, will be, um, opening up, uh, those eligible. In addition to the, uh, uh, talent, um, gateway project that has, uh, broken ground, and they're really, uh, making some headway on that, shooting for end of the summer, uh, moving for families, so.
Excellent.
Yeah, I, um, there was, um, a, one of the parks has been delayed a couple more weeks for FEMA's purposes. Uh, I don't remember if that's Coleman Creek or if it's Rogue Valley, but, um, so, we're pushing a year now, unfortunately, but, um, but they're getting there, and they're working really hard on it, so, um, and, uh, still a lot of people in hotels, um, and there, there's a whole, uh, the state of Oregon is involved in supporting those people with, with local, using local resources as well, um, but there's still a huge need for housing, um, uh, for, uh, people from all walks of life, um, including those who are just trying to rebuild their homes, so, um, but I understand the cities are getting some additional funding and support that should help with planning and speed along that process of permits and things like that, but, um, it's, it's slow, because we all want it to be faster, but it's fast compared to other disasters, which isn't exactly comforting still, but, um, uh, there is still a lot of hard work, uh, on the ground to get people housed as quickly as possible, so. I will also share, uh, last weekend, maybe Saturday, Senator Wyden was here, Director Salazar from the state of Oregon in the housing, and they shared some news that there'll be, um, a number of funds coming into our area to be able to help support a hundred percent cleanup, support people getting back into, um, a home. Um, Director Salazar shared that, uh, there's a partnership with the manufacturer, Home Company in the Midwest, I think, that they've already, uh, placed an order for a hundred and seventy homes to come to, to be able to rent or to purchase, um, and, and supported by the state of Oregon, and so, um, that connection is, is huge, um, and that will probably be, um, she said fall or winter on, on delivery, but probably with everything going, probably more like winter, hopefully it's on the, that next spring or summer, but that was some exciting news.
Thank you both for attending the meetings and informing us on them. We appreciate it. Um, diversity, equity, inclusion, I have nothing to say.
Yeah, I don't have anything. We'll just, uh, we're planning our in-service, and we'll have some trainings, uh, involved there, but that's, uh, we'll have more of an update in August.
Okay. And then, for information, it's Paul, next, we will be voting on policy, INDB flag displayed and salute, and that should, information should be in your package.
That's basically just adding the POW flag.
Okay.
You've seen those go up, uh, around different buildings, and, um, um, we will do an analysis because it's that if current structure allows, and if it's a desire of the board, we'll see what we'll need, uh, for current structure, but I believe we have some that, uh, would support it now. That was, that was past years ago, I think. Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, um, the next policy for discussion is, uh, JGA corporal punishment.
This is another optional, uh, policy, but it's like, um, not allowed, so, it just, uh, clarifies that, and, um, attorneys have some red language in there, I'll just clarify some of that.
Okay. Um, next, our policy would be JHCA dash JHCB immunization, physical examination, I, vision screening, eye exam, and dental screening.
Every once in a while, the, um, they, they start really looking at the policy and, and aligning what the rules are and the current practices, and then they make recommendations for, uh, those policies, um, in, in red language. You see, you'll notice in these, there's no optional language, this is something that, um, is required.
Okay, any questions?
I feel like these, um, were combined. I feel like there was a dental screening, and there was an immunization, there was, so, I, the dental screen is a little, but, I'm, I was appreciative of it all coming together as one.
Were you in luck?
Yes. Good to know. And all of those have reports that we never give a party.
Tiffany gets excited about policies. I'm on board policy KL public complaint.
Yeah, you may recognize this policy, too, because we've updated it every year for the fourth straight year, based on, um, recommended, recommendations from, uh, OSBA, so this is the latest update. Um, I, I always hesitate to really adopt policies right after legislative session ends, because there's potential that there's legislation in there that will change these policies, hence the reason you see, um, dates on it that were too long ago. The recommendation.
Any questions? Okay. The annual, the annual agenda items.
Dawn, did, you've been keeping a list for the last year. Is this updated with anything from your notes from the last year of things that we need to talk about when, or is this what we have used previously?
This is what, the notes I have been keeping for was for our board retreat, um...
But some of it addressed the timing of some of these things?
Everything looks good, but I will double-check it before we vote on it.
Okay, 'cause I have, well, I had a...
Yeah.
I do.
Please, Sarah.
So, um, the monthly diversity, equity, inclusion, I think we talked a little bit about having it come out of, if there was a committee that was meeting, having a report of that committee versus just discussion, if there's a, if there's something happening then, um, but that, again, was part of the notes for the...
Right.
Um, so some of it maybe, um...
That's what we've been doing, I think, sort of.
So, in September, review personnel policies handbook, is that the book that goes to new hires, to everybody, the little...
Yeah.
Yeah. So, should we review that in August before everybody gets it? Or does it not go out until after everyone is hired? Does that something that happens the first week that you have your in-service?
You know, we, we could look at doing that earlier. I think, um, if there's any update, that might be a stretch to get it this August, and I don't want to scare our new...
No, I'm not trying to...
But ti- typically, we do those updates and share that with staff, um, in the fall.
Okay. Well, I just wasn't sure, is a new hire, if you get your new book, and then we look at it in September to approve something that we've already handed...
Yeah, that's a good question.
To new.
Sure.
Um, appoint student representatives to the board. Um, we did push it out of September last year, and I think I was gonna maybe suggest, and, and I realized, after I was thinking later, that this may be end of September, first part of October, I know we like to have them in place for the in-person meeting at the high school, but September felt really early with trying to get everybody back to school and sign up for stuff, so. Thought I might suggest October with Toby's way in.
And, and no, this is simply a guide.
I know, yeah, I just thought, you know...
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I agree, that does seem fast, but it's...
September, good.
Got my show.
No, no, that, um...
It is nice to have them at that first meeting.
First meeting. Is it our first meeting in October?
And it's, yes.
Okay.
And we can, we can look at changing that.
Just maybe the second meeting in October, just to give a little bit more time, not have it feel so rushed, um, at that initial onset of school, so, um, um, and then ATI came for their annual review, I think closer to the spring, because of how the year was, so I feel like we just had a really great end-of-year review from her, so to see her again in the spring, or is that the program report that happened? Maybe I'm confused. So, it's in November.
You're right. That's typically what she would do, how she would review, um, the year, what she did this year was essentially review this year.
Right.
Um, and so, it, it, it is a potential suggestion to put that towards the end of the spring to re, you're talking about, uh, reviewing the current year.
Right.
I would say we should ask her what is best, because maybe there's a reason, there's a reason why November was picked.
I think she asked for more time.
Yeah, so, I, I mean, I just...
So, these are just, so, these are just, these are just mine? So these are just, so these are just, these are just mine.
No, no, no. I think.
My throw-out. And did we just review the transportation contract that's in November? And then it's on our June schedule as well?
For what time?
So the next-to-the-last bullet point, review transportation contract? And then it's also in June? Transfer, oh, first student contract when appropriate.
Yeah. Where, I, sorry, I don't.
And then it's also in November?
Yeah.
I would rather.
I would, well, so I, and then.
Okay.
We have on there three times throughout the year, reviewing the board guiding principles. And I would just like to say that maybe that's something we do at the beginning, like the summer for the year, maybe if something comes up. But I don't know that it needs to be on. It's on July, November, and April.
I don't remember.
I don't rem, well, and I don't know if it just comes up, or if, anyway, so that, and then, so in May was review and approve the food service contract, which we just did. So were we just?
Yeah.
Okay.
So those are contracts, and those are typically meal prices too, I think.
Meal prices?
Yeah.
So it's on July.
Yeah.
Too, also, which is review lunch programs, and then established meal prices in the May. So is that something we could combine potentially on?
I would say we just did that in the.
I know. So why, I'm wondering why it's on, but meal prices, is that, that's something that has to happen in a, in a timely?
Yeah.
Right? So that has to stick.
Sometimes we have to push that back because we don't get them. We get those from Sidex.
Right. So those were my, those were my perusal.
Very good. Thank you so much for the input. And I like them all. Like I said, I like, someone probably would like more time.
No, yeah. Well, I didn't know if she wanted to come back around in November with the same, I mean, she just gave the report in May with the information she would probably be using to give the November report. So while it would be lovely to see her, she's probably got a lot going.
I think also when they're supposed to get their financial audit.
Oh, yes.
Is November?
So they first they annual review for their contract. So that's where they go visit.
Okay, that's when, that's when we go.
We go, okay.
To the visit, and we need to, you know, look at the contract and check in and.
Okay. So then what she comes to do at a separate time is more of like a program report. Okay. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could someone give our new members a rundown of the policies in terms of the color coding in the policies? So red means this, blue means that?
Right now, or?
Did we already do that?
I talked to Denise.
I met with Rebecca, one-on-one, and tried to with policies, but we didn't get that.
Okay. So if you have questions about that, because I went a few months before I fully understood what all colors meant, so make sure you do that before you vote on them. Good practice. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else on the board agenda items? If you think of anything else for the next meeting, we can bring them up. Thank you, Sarah, for all that input. Next is board guiding principles.
This is for discussion at the next meeting.
You can discuss it now, and then we can discuss it at the next meeting. If there's anything, any changes or add, it's better to do it now than we have time to, to read them and discuss them. But if we have changes again, we don't have to vote on it. The next meeting, we can also move it ahead. Does that make sense? So if you have, I'd be willing to discuss it right now.
I, yeah, I don't have the, I wasn't prepared to add anything today. I think that would be a good, when are we going to talk more about the retreat?
When are we going to talk more about this? Can we talk about it at the, right before I adjourn the meeting?
Sure. Good.
Okay. Anything else on guiding principles? Polly and Rebecca, if you have any questions, do you understand the guiding principles? Perfect. Thank you for Denise for catching them up. I appreciate it. Moving on, the annual report of physical restraint and seclusion.
Required by law to share with the school board, and, yeah, we had two incidents to share, so. There you go.
Thank you very much. And that's really low compared to other districts, correct?
Well, and we were in this before.
Oh, great. True. That's right. Because I was like, two.
Well, there's somewhere in Liffey early, right?
Yeah.
Do you think it's a town?
Okay.
Thank you, Tiffany. Moving on to SRO contracts for PHS and TMS.
We have a great relationship with both, both our municipalities with Phoenix and Talent. They're supportive of our SRO program, and I know the board has been supportive of that. We have recently added the SRO at Talent Middle School. This will be going into our third year, I think. And so we're really excited about that. Talent is currently looking, Ernie Whiteman, who is the SRO guru, really in the nation, is going to actually fully retire from retired. We had him as a retired SRO, and now I think he's, I don't think his wife will let him do that anymore. So he's going to fully retire. He will be missed. He will still be around. He's a great resource. And I know when Talent gets somebody on board, that he will be willing to really get them up to speed, so.
And I just want to give a kudos to Aaron Hall and whoever picked him. I mean, like, if you built the perfect SRO, he is it. Like, he's the model, perfect SRO, amazing. I've seen him in action with football games at school. He even walked the students first year. He walked students. The connections he's making with the families and the students is amazing. So hopefully, he's got the talent, he's got some tough shoes to fill, because the Phoenix one is amazing, and it's such a great program, so.
I only have one thing on page 61 of the Talent, is Talent has a new city manager, Jamie McCloskey.
That's very long.
So.
And I just was.
Did you just?
So did they make that official? She's a, she's a.
She was, I saw that she was unanimously voted by the city council, so her start date should be.
Oh, it's, it's a permanent position, ma'am.
Yeah. Jamie was just, Jamie wasn't, I shouldn't have said that. Jamie was an interim, and they hired a new.
They hired someone different?
They hired, yeah. Jamie had never, I don't think Jamie had plans to be anything other than an interim.
Got it. Okay. Thank you. I didn't know that.
Yeah, she didn't even, she wasn't.
I don't think she was.
Okay. Got it.
Thank you, Sarah. Any other ads? Have you seen any between now and the next meeting?
So we'll be looking to hire, so I guess I was assuming incorrectly that Ernie was coming back. Ernie, right? So Talent, off-siteing their.
Oh, yeah.
So how, you can give me my question.
Yeah. And we begged Ernie, but it didn't work. But they will, they're hiring an employee for this position, and they have a couple options. Actually, there are other retired officers as well. So that, this will be a Talent police officer-supported position, so.
Okay.
They're contracting with another agency for patrol.
Right.
But they know that this is a position that they're in support of, and so they're hiring specifically for.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other discussion on that?
Actually, just for the record, we pay for that, too. I mean, it's not necessarily all city-supported, so.
Well, in Talent, it's not any other, I mean.
Other than training.
Right. And equipment. Right.
Just.
So, I just wondered because it's been a cooperation with the police, and if they're contracting out, does that mean it's coming from where they're contracting out, or this will be something that's?
Yeah. It'll be a talent PD office.
Okay.
Thank you. Great question, Sarah. Okay, moving on to the retreat.
And I actually have two things on the agenda for information and discussion. I apologize, but we can start with the retreat.
Okay.
So is there, so August 3rd, I may have a conflict on August 3rd. Can we look at August 10th?
I have a conflict.
You have one? Okay.
So how did we come up with the August 3rd date? Because this is the first I've heard of.
Yeah, it is. I apologize for that.
Me too, Sarah.
Okay, well, so I'm glad I made this.
How about we, we do a poll on dates?
Okay.
End of July, first part of August.
In an email would be great.
Yeah.
But. Yeah. That sounds great.
Yeah.
You'll have to individually poll people.
Yeah. I'm going to be gone for a week. I can let you know that week, Denise, to pay the poll up, so.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's that.
Okay. That was EDBB. What's your next one, Michael?
So I got a call from Mayor Darby today. They had their new community development director, Culver, that's part of our, what I believe is just our normal UGV process that we've been undergoing as part of our long-range facility plan, came up, and she wasn't sure if that was for emergency howl new or for the UGV process. So I said that I would ask them. So if Talent has an agenda item regarding Culver Road, that's for, that's for the UGV expansion as part of our long-range facilities plan that we've been working on for years and years.
Correct.
Okay. And I think that's important because it coincides with when there was discussion of using Culver Road for emergency purposes. This is something that's been in the works for years, and it's just now coming to fruition for the city, so. So I'm right on that?
You're, you're right on. And there's a firm that's kind of supporting the transition of that, and they emailed today to see if this was still living UGV, and we said absolutely. And we know Talent's been involved in a lot of other planning and permitting, but we would be happy to have a discussion when that comes up. And so that's on their docket. They were confirming that. I'm glad it was, you confirmed that as well.
So they haven't taken action on it yet because they were confused about, the new community development director was confused about. I was like, oh, our consultant's going to love that, and it's delayed again. But, yeah, so, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Thank you for allowing me to add something to the end there.
I wanted to add, just to clarify in case people don't know, the land use right now is farm use on the Culver fields, and so to do improvements, we need to change the UGV to school. So I just want, again, I wanted, for public record.
Not for development.
Right. Not to build 18 billion houses, but it's so we can update our yields and go in the city water, I believe, and, wow, yeah.
However, we have declared a portion of the property surplus.
Correct.
So that is something, but, and just to make it clear, that, that's not included in this UGV.
Oh, it's not?
Okay. Perfect. That's a later-down-the-road deal.
Got it. Okay. Excellent.
Okay. So.
Important clarification.
Review the agenda for next meeting. You should all have the draft in your packet. Call orders and date of deposit, citizen comments. We will be, again, reminded, they will be in person, and they will sign up, and we will be at the high school, the superintendent's report, the consent agenda, the board policy INDB, the flag display salute, the JGA corporal punishment, GHCA, GHCE, the immunization, physical examination, vision screening, dental, policy KL, public comments, the annual agenda items. We will probably relook at those and change them around if there are suggestions. Board guiding principles, SRO contract for PHS, SRO contract for TMS, and residency framework plan.
And that will be what the board has to approve on that fall opening.
Okay. Thank you. Oh, the, yeah, part of the RSSL. And then we will have the legal on, financial update, legislation, and OSBA update, meet a fire, diversity, equity, inclusion, budget committee vacancies, and OSBA summer conference debrief for those that want to debrief. Anything that we are missing?
I do have a question.
Yes.
For going to in-person, what, I think one of the nice things that's come out of COVID is we've been streaming the board meetings, and the public can access them without physically having to attend. So are we still planning on at least streaming the meeting? I'm not necessarily suggesting, I think it gets really complicated when you're taking comments both digitally and in person. But for the purposes of at least allowing the public to view the meeting, that's something that we were still planning on doing, or are we? And also because it's translated, so.
And so, yes, that's, we'll continue to do that, but I think the public comment will either need to be written or in person.
Yeah.
Yeah, I agree.
We'll make that clear at the beginning of that meeting.
Okay.
And again, this is new for all of us.
Right.
It's not here now, but we have a system now that you can stream, and you make a good point that it will be translated as well as.
Yeah.
That's great.
Can I, can I ask maybe that we not have the board guiding principles as an action item until after our summer board retreat?
Yes.
Okay.
So can we just take that off and maybe leave it on information and discussion, or just take it off until after we get that scheduled?
Yes. Good plan. Thank you, Sarah. That's a great idea. That is a great idea. And then we'll look for the polls via email so we can put the date for. Okay. Anything else at the next one's meeting? Thank you all. Heather, you're a trooper for staying on the little line. Congratulations for me.
Yes.
Yay.
Heather, thanks for everything you're doing with summer school.
Yes, Heather, you're a rock star.
Thank you, Heather.
It's, it's fun work. I love you guys, and I wish I was there in person.